No, you can have that one. You want it? I don't need it. I thought it'd be good. Do you want it? I thought it was a lot of care, you know. Do you want it?
The city manager had asked that you proceed. Can we get people in the hallway to go to the meeting?
Okay. I was afraid he quit. He couldn't take it. Okay. Good evening and thank you for attending tonight's city council meeting. For those who are attending remotely, the camera in the council chambers is set up to show those attending in person tonight. The platform we are using has a raise hand feature. You will notice a picture of a hand in the upper right-hand corner. When you, when we reach the point in the meeting where the public has the opportunity to address council, you can click the button and be given your opportunity to address council. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Mayor, after the pledge while we're standing, I would like to, as a council, please, a moment of silence for Sergeant Scott Reese. He was an eighteen-year veteran and we lost him this week. And I know it affected quite a few people in town. I think he deserves that.
Yes.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in its own right and which is the justice of our rights and justice of our citizens.
Thank you.
Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Kelly.
Here.
Council Noah.
Here.
Council Fisher.
Here.
Council Manning.
Here.
Council Powers.
Here.
Council Reese.
Here.
Council Campbell Reese.
Here.
Corn President.
We have three public hearings tonight. The first public hearing is regarding a local law to amend the city charter in regard to residency requirement for the position of chief of police. It is going to be bill number sixty-seven. I will open that public hearing up now. If anyone attending in person would like to speak regarding the public hearing, please come down to the podium and you have five minutes to speak. Please come down.
I would oppose the idea that this chief of police has to live within the city. I can understand the mileage requirement, but I don't think he should have to live within the city. Back then, as a taxpayer, it was not a problem, I don't think. You've had good chief of police that didn't live within the city and I don't see that there's a negative effect on that.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else would like to speak?
I just have one question on it. If this resolution passes and the police chief is a resident of this community and he happens to have a camp up there in Morrisone, outside of Morrisone or Hudson Camp in Colton, wants to stay there with the parameters you guys are gonna come up with.
Okay. Thank you. We'll take this up at our discussion. Thank you, Doug. Is there anyone else that would like, please come down?
I'm Rick Palmak. I'm a retired chief recently out of the police department. I did thirty-six years in, nearly thirty-six years. I worked with a lot of people through all those years. And I gotta say, I don't know if the reason behind residency is because you think that it's more dedicated or better to respond in an emergency or whatever, but that doesn't hold any water at all from what I have seen in my experience. Chief Andy Kennedy, and I think Steve Fisher could tell you, I worked with Steve his whole career, there's a lot of people that lived outside the city that were around because I'm his guy. And they can respond. I've seen people respond before people in the city. Chief Andy Kennedy worked as a detective, lived about ninety-nine miles outside the city, and he was always there. Never had a problem getting here on time, and you couldn't ask for anybody more dedicated than him. So I would oppose residency.
Thank you. Is there anyone else would like to speak on this? Now, if you are, now, if anyone is attending remotely would like to speak regarding the public hearing, please use the raise hand feature in the upper right-hand corner of your screen and you'll have five minutes to speak.
I don't see any hands raised, yes.
Okay. I declare this public hearing closed. Our second public hearing is regarding an ordinance to provide for the sale of city-owned property at, city-owned property at public auction, Paper Curtis Street. It is going to be bill sixty-nine and I will open this meeting up now. If anyone would like to, if anyone attending in person would like to speak regarding the public hearing, please come down to the podium and you have five minutes.
Hi, Jeff Slanson again. I just wanted to let you know on the follow-up, I appreciate Mr. Reese coming down and taking a look at the situation. I appreciate the other party coming to me and saying verbally that he would allow me a right of way, although I still think I probably need more than that by ten years down the road to preserve the rights of my property and just would ask you guys to reconsider one last time, maybe selling them forty or forty-five feet, reeling ten or fifteen feet for a right of way.
Thank you. Is there anyone else would like to speak?
I went over and talked to Mr. Slanson. He told me that basically two or two-tenths a year he goes down through that piece of property. And I told him that I was purchased it. I had absolutely no problem with him going down through that. My only issue would be, I'm not going any farther than my original lot. I enjoy wider, move deeper than a hundred feet, twenty feet, I believe. So if there's still access from his backyard, it may be from the other end of Curtis Street, from newspaper street, which could be cleared out of the city or two up. The other thing is, my only concern would be down the road with that. If the neighbor to the immediate north of me decided to sell or whatever, and there was still a right of way or that piece, how would they handle it? I don't, I don't know now. I believe you have a letter on file from the power of attorney for the neighbor to the immediate north of me that said they understand my intention and they should.
Okay.
And I don't really, I have.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else would like to speak on this? Now, if you are attending remotely would like to speak regarding the public hearing, please use the raise hand feature in the upper right-hand corner of your screen and you'll have five minutes.
Mayor, I think Joe would say something else.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, if this passes or whatever, when it goes to auction or whatever, how will it know? Will we be notified or?
Yes, it, it, yes. Staff will notify you.
Is anyone using the microphone down a little bit? Somebody says they can't hear them at the front. Can you just angle the microphone down here?
Kathy, is anyone?
I see no hands raised here.
Okay. I will declare this public hearing closed. Our next public hearing is regarding a local law to amend the city charter in regard to the powers and duties of the city manager. It is going to be bill number seventy-two and I will open the public hearing now. If you are attending in person would like to speak regarding the public hearing, please come down to the podium and you will have five minutes.
All right. I won't need all five minutes. I wouldn't like to ask council, do you guys have the city charter in front of you or access to it on your tablet?
I do.
Yeah, okay, perfect. Does the new members of this council remember last November when the city council, a few of you were on it, attempted to revise the city charter in the same manner as you are tonight and subsequent public outcry? Do you guys get that? All right, I'll move on down. Under the document, "Revising City Charters in New York State Provided by the New York State Department of State," the stated method the council is proposing to use to not amend it is legal, but that it is infrequently used. Next one, I noticed that this was the only amendment that was included in tonight's meeting with regard to the city manager. As the author of this amendment, or the four-to-three gang as Mayor Skelly likes to call, look at the other parts of the city charter. Take a look at C-9, limits on the duties of the city council. You'd be violating C-9B and C-9C if those are not also amended. And if you chose not to amend them, you guys could be removed from office if you act on taking over power from the city manager. That's something you might wanna look at before you vote on this tonight. It's right there, C-9, take a look at it. Anyway, thanks for the time. If this does pass tonight, I'm pretty sure there will be a public referendum. Just like the one you wanted to do for the fire department, we'll do the same. So take a look at C-9, boys and girls.
Come down, Doug.
Council Reese, you were quoted in the Waterfall Times, Tuesday August eleventh, that the city charter was considered, was not considered carefully when it was adopted. I have to differ a little bit. I think there was quite a few qualified people to start the first charter. And I think your dad was a supervisor back then that had some input in that. So I'd have to say that there was some pretty good people on there and I think it was considered very, very well. And that's what the taxpayers of this community wanted back then. And, you know, the other quote was, back in the seventies, the charter and reforming government came involved. A lot of these charters were just boilerplate and they were just passed around and people just adopted. I happened to be on the last charter revision committee in two thousand seventeen along with Mr. McGrath back there, and I can assure you, for six to eight months, there were great discussions with a thirteen-person committee on every aspect of that charter. We were all volunteers, okay? We hadn't, we had, we had nothing to gain, just like the past people that were on the charter commission. I almost, Tully was here and he was that one. It's pretty easy to see you guys wanna tip away at the charter. I truly feel this is not in the best interest of our city. In fact, it is a very dangerous situation for this city. We need a professional running this community. We do not need the mayor and council giving back to the old days of hiring, firing, and micromanaging. This city has operated very effectively since the seventies with the city manager former governor. To me, this is a power grab and an ego booster. The only reason I've heard is people voted for that, for us, to make the change. What I can see happening is you hire the department head, one of these people going to that department head, asking them to do something, telling them to do something and they don't do it. And guess what? We're coming back here to the old four-to-three vote and they're gonna fire. That's not the way this community is gonna succeed, okay? I have to agree with the Waterfall Times editor on Sunday's paper that said, if you don't trust yourselves to appoint a competent city manager, often we as taxpayers trust you to appoint competent department heads. I feel as a taxpayer, there are other important issues you should be working on at the council. Let the city manager do his job, as the charter says. If any city manager, this is approved, and any city manager comes in here to take the position here in this city, okay, and work under them conditions, they should leave this community because it's not good for this community. So it's a take a rocket scientist to figure out this administration will never go back to the mayor council former governor. That would set this community back fifty years. There are three things that this administration hasn't proven yet. Can you do the job? Can you do the job the right way? And the biggest thing is, can you do the job with a little class and respect? That's what this community wants. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Mike Tully, over at Two Fourteen Hamilton Street here in the city. I've been in council for the opportunity to speak with me. Regarding proposed changes to the city charter, consideration, I have city councils considered an alternate approach to action of bill seventy-two and bill sixty-seven. One of these proposals, plus other actions taken by city councils in the interim, plus other ideas that city council may consider in the near future, may either impact the common interpretation of the city charter. I suggest the mayor, with city council approval, either appoint a city charter commission or reconvene the twenty-seventh city charter commission. The commission could read tonight's bills, prior actions of city council taken since twenty-seventeen, maybe a change relates questions to interpretation of the city charter and possible other changes city council might have up until now. Granted, typically, city charter commissions are appointed every ten years, but I think the scope of that family involving or impacting the city charter since twenty-seventeen merits consideration of the city charter commission now. If the decision is made to establish a city charter commission, please know I have no intention to serve the path. I served on two city charter commissions in the path, and while I enjoyed serving in cities, it's a path for me, professional, personal demand of my time to fulfill my obligation. But I think reconvening in the twenty-seventeen city charter commission would be a prudent choice to reconsider my suggestion. The city council elects not to make use of the city charter commission at this time, but I suggest that a proposed change in bill seventy to be revised to require a recommendation of the city manager and the city council before action is taken by the council to hire or fire an department head. This would place a good check and balance on such decisions. City council still has a final plan, actions recommended by the city manager. So if there's a reason the city council is not agree with the recommendation, they can go according to it. At the same time, city council cannot force or hire or terminate at the heart and hand without city manager approval. I note in the New York State education law, a school board of education takes action to hire, principal, teachers, teacher assistant, terminated as well, but none of those actions could take place without the recommendation of the superintendent of the school. And I suggest that city's policy mirror that in here at state public school district. So I ask you, please take my ideas into consideration for making the decisions on bill seventy-two and fifty-one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Is there anyone else would like to speak?
I, I would. Mr. Hackett, go first then.
My name is Matt Hackett. I've been around for a long time and I remember the city was run by a council former government and the city manager was finally hired, Frank Calraut. The administration of the city improved dramatically. Evidently, there were members of this council who think you could do it better. I think you're chasing a money carrot. You dump the city manager, keep running with other chief of police, and I understand you're saving money. Money's the great thing, but there's a quality carrot that you gotta consider also. Not to deviate, but I've also heard the name of volunteer firemen. Please don't go there. You're chasing a money carrot again and the quality carrot just can't be compared to it. If you wanna chase the money carrot, take a look at the income side. Mayor, you got involved because you were very upset about your Lincoln School assessment. The assessment goal of this town is a disaster. It's old. They reassessed my house about four years ago, first time in fifteen years. They raised it thirty percent. The good news is, I guess I got by for fifteen years and played less than my share. My point is, there's a ton of property in this town that hasn't been touched in years. So you're reassessed at today's value, and this is market value, forget about fixing a porch or a paint job, we're talking market value. Inflation drives the cost up if you do nothing. I did nothing on my home. And when they reassess it, frankly, it's supposed to be at a hundred percent. They're still not at a hundred percent. You probably wouldn't sell that for what they assessed it for. My point is, reassess this city citywide and do it in a short period of time, hire the people to do it. The house across the road from you sold eighteen months ago. It was assessed at eighty-six thousand, sold at a hundred and eighteen, thirty-eight percent below assessed value. We're supposed to be at a hundred percent or nowhere near there. If you want fair taxes, fix the part that needs to make it fair. You're chasing some dangerous areas with this power grab that appears, and good luck with you guys. God bless you. You're chasing some carrots and you're gonna need a blessing that you would like. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak?
Just a, just a point of information on, on that resolution. Since Mr. Tully brought it up, so the resolution does state that it is an appointment by the manager and his recommendation with an affirmative vote of majority of the council. So it is a check and balance and that's the way it's designed.
Thank you, John.
Point of order, are we only doing public appearances for Q and A's? I'm, I'm not opposed to it. Typically, public appearances, they're allowed to come up.
No, I just had a point of information.
It, it, it's fine. Thank you, John. Now, if anyone is, now, if anyone attending remotely would like to speak regarding this public hearing?
I think we have a hand in the back there.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
We're talking about again. As a police officer in the department, one of my other duties was teaching at the police academy. And I think if you take this action, you're gonna set us back a hundred and thirty years. Civil service was created to stop political influence and they appointed some of these major positions like this. That's why it was created at the beginning. And I think probably the city manager, council former government fell on that because of that law, unfortunately. You take this action and take power away from the city managers, you got the, you got the opportunity then to influence. If you have personality conflicts or someone grudges, which quite frankly, in the last eight months, that's what appears some of these actions out of, in my opinion. And I think it's wrong for you guys to do this, to take that power away from the city manager. You should be sitting there unbiased, do a good interview with all the possible candidates and make his recommendation. You shouldn't have any say, as far as I'm concerned, with regards to who that appointment should be.
Thank you. Yes.
I looked at the book, Council Reese said. If you go back to the, so if you go back to the charter, C-9B, appointments and removals. So in your amendment, after an affirmative vote of a majority of the city council, appoint in when necessary for good of the city, says neither the city, under C-9B, neither the city council nor any of its members, including the mayor, shall in any manner dictate the appointment or removal of any city administrative officers or employees whom the city manager is empowered to appoint. Right?
Correct.
It wouldn't be?
In the best case.
With the city attorney, maybe we could get him to explain it.
But he already is already gonna do this. He's already gonna do this?
I mean, am I missing something? I guess explain it to me like a very simple, because it doesn't make any sense.
Really not a question to answer.
So you're right. The B says exactly, including the mayor shall in any manner dictate the appointment or removal of any city administrative officers or employees whom the city manager or any of its subordinates are empowered to appoint.
Correct.
So basically, this resolution violates C-9.
Dan, this is room for our discussions, this isn't a question.
Okay. A three there in the public. God, I gotta read it.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Now, if you're attending remotely, please use the raise hand feature and you have five minutes.
Mayor, I do see one hand raised. The individual is registered as Brian Mitchell and I'm going to unmute him now.
Hello, Brian.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry to be attending in person, but I'm here just to address the public hearing that's going on. One thing that I'd like to make clear, but I think the public is not aware, is Mr. Jolly right now is currently doing the job, working two to three days a week. So my question there would be, if you're going to hire for a full-time city manager January first, that was stated, you're now taking away the major responsibility of a city manager. That's hiring, firing, and getting his team together. If Mr. Jolly can do this, working two days a week, are we gonna take this into consideration when we look for a permanent replacement? The other thing is, as I previously stated, the hiring and firing is a major, major priority of this job. You're gonna go out and advertise for a city manager. What are you gonna advertise for responsibilities? So the city manager is just gonna be giving whoever you guys deem is essential and correct for this position? I'd also like to ask, you know, you hired Mr. Jolly temporary and the mayor said his background in public service is phenomenal. So if that's the case, you got the professional to hire the chief of police. Now, this council is gonna go interview for chief of police? If you ask me, there's only one reason why you guys are gonna go out and interview. That's because you handpicked somebody. And just so you know, I mean, it's going around town, but a name has already been picked. As Chief Palmak already stated, these gentlemen we have in the force now have dedicated every minute they have of service to this city. And we're gonna do a dishonor to them by go ahead and hire someone from outside when we have the qualified people right here in town. I hope you guys truly consider this. I'm sure at the end of this, the vote's gonna be four to three and we're right back, just like you'd like to put on your truck, Mr. Mayor, four to three. So I just hope you guys realize what you're doing and make the right decision for the taxpayers. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Brian. Is there anyone else, Kathy?
There is the next individual is registered as Colleen Ashley Mayett and I'm going to open that line now. It appears to be ourselves muted and the line looks like it's open, Ryan.
Hello, Colleen. Hello, Colleen.
The line is open. It's showing open our line. She's not self-muted. Would you like to move on to the next person?
Yes, please, we can go back.
Okay. The next individual is registered as James McCarthy, and I will unmute that person now. It appears to be our self-muted Mr. McCarthy, and it appears the line is open now, sir.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes. Hi, Jim.
Hey, Mike. I'd just like to reiterate what Ricky Polniak said about civil service. As some of you may be aware, just recently, Augsburg Civil Service was taken over by St. Lawrence County Civil Service. So I had to attend a meeting in Canton about the changes and actually the history of civil service. And Mr. Polniak hit the nail right in the head when he said, "Civil service was created to take politics and nepotism out of the picture when it came time to hiring and firing." So civil service should, their rules should apply here, not the rules of government. These positions are all civil service positions, and they should be all protected by civil service rights. And I believe by the recommendation that you're putting forth tonight would do just the opposite of what civil service was intended for. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
I do not see any other hands raised.
And Colleen didn't come back?
She did not come back. Oh, I'm sorry. There is an individual now, that person is registered as Julie Ann Cliff, and I will unmute that line now. It appears the line is open.
Good evening.
Hi, Julie.
Hey, Mike, how are you? You know, I've kind of been watching, and I don't live in the city, and I don't have a vote, but as a longtime citizen of Augsburg and a taxpayer, you know, I think, you know, the Augsburg government came to a city manager former government for a lot of reasons, and has really served our community very well. And I really think it's a mistake that we need a professional to run the city. Obviously, we have someone there now, and we need to support that person. And I think this is challenging times. I think, I just, I think I just saw my uncle speak about taxes, and you know, people are hurting, and we need stability. And I think the city council's role is to set policy. And once you vary from that, you really lead down a very, very twisted role. So I would really encourage you not to do this, and I appreciate all of your time, and all of you need to really vote your conscience. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone, Kathy?
It appears that Colleen Ashley, that may have come back, however, it doesn't appear as though her audio is connected there. She doesn't have the ability for me to, and now she has just taken her hand down. She may be experiencing technical difficulties, probably under it. There are no other hands raised at this time.
Okay. I declare this public hearing closed. And this brings us to personal appearance. At this time, if anyone attending in person would like to address council, please come to the podium, and you have five minutes.
So, and I think that would be discussed, or may be discussed today, is item for the council's action. It says an amendment to amend the official city map to the dog or portion of paper here was free. And as you all know, I applied for a subdivision. Now, a portion of the street, which is more than fifty percent, is not dissolved. So my question today comes because I was really informed by the planning, by the planning department, that the city, when they have a parkland and they have a whole street like this, they either dissolve it off or don't dissolve it at all. But they don't subdivide, they don't go and do balance. And the only time they go and do balances is if that place is comfortable and they can't make buildings on that property. So by having more than fifty percent of the street not dissolved, I motion that the rest of it does not be dissolved. And if the city feels, no, we can, and we have the right, I'd like to have an example in the fact that this happens, and this is not settling as soon as. This is point number one. Point number two, the motion of dissolving it now, I was given the dimensions they're going to do it, and this dimension are saying sixty by hundred and ten. Basically, by moving this dimension, they're including on my property, that Mr. Smith's future property or property only stretches at hundred, hundred of fewer streets. So why settle in hundred and ten? Why include on my property? That's what, the answer I was given, because you have seventy-five, seventy-five white frontage on here, and that was a property should have. This is not true. I showed Mr. Mayor and the市政厅 available, so everybody see my property. My property is only eighty-three white. Taking out of it, this hundred and ten means we're taking out of this ten, out of eighty-three, so my frontage becomes seventy-six. So my first point, I don't want the other part to be possible, not to be dissolved and stay as a street. If it has to be, then if you amend it, it only extends to the end of Mr. Smith's property, which is a hundred feet on my, not to ever include on mine, not to affect my seventy-five frontage on here. The other reason, I ask if I can, since my, the part of here is just undesolved, because now it's affecting my property, was to be dissolved and selling public options, it would affect my property and somebody will landlocked me. I ask if I can purchase that part, and since I'm the only person who can really purchase, otherwise anybody else will landlock me. The answer came to me, no, we can't. But on the same time, if you turn your pages here, page two says, item number four, number five, the distribution of the sale of surplus property. The pages are one hundred and one hundred and fifty, so Mr. Michael, I don't want to say his last name, I'm not sure I know if I can do that. So basically, the city is selling properties to a person, and is okay with that. It's now putting it for public sales and public options. So when I ask for that grant, why am I being denied? So these are my three points that I'd like to discuss.
Thanks. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Wang.
Hi, Cindy.
I would like to start by publicly thanking councilors Nicole Kennedy, Mike Howard, and Dan Scamperley for your relentless endurance and incomparable efforts to prevent the disruption our city currently faces. Your ability to withstand and still remain professional while working with these councilors is impressive. It's no secret that my family and friends are directly affected by the shameful and sycophoric behavior displayed by the persons on this council. Even though my son was one of the people at risk of layoffs, my issue isn't with the possibility of layoffs. It's with the fact that not even one of our stones was turned over for alternative solutions and an obvious lack of research was present. They came in slashing careers and altering the lives of so many of our most important people, giving no consider to respect or dignity. I would like to read on record a post on Facebook from Steve Fisher, dated October four, two thousand nineteen, titled Political Rhetoric. Why is it every time an election approaches and incumbents are called out on issues, a false narrative is disseminated, instilling imminent job loss and fear among workers? One starts, and the posse joins in. A very good friend and businessman stopped me at the gas station. He told me words was being spread that my son was running in this upcoming election, wanting to know if our intention was to do away with the police and fire department. Well, I guess false news is a laughing matter of Augsburg, says Steve. We are not looking to take away the jobs of the hardworking employees of the city of Augsburg. These are our friends, our family, and teachers of local businesses. Will costs be made? Of course, over the next four years, and this will be done by attrition, combining services, and contractual negotiations, end quote. To my fellow community members, Steve Fisher is a living, walking, breathing example of creating false narratives and fake handmade promises in order to win an election. A Facebook post from Mike Scamperley dated October four, twenty nineteen, I quote, "Lies, lies, lies. This is what desperate politicians do, and apparently we have some desperate incumbents on city council. City employee jobs will be much safer with our leadership than for more years under credit to the council," end quote. I mean, that contrary, one of the first actions made was to hastily cut positions at both police and fire departments, with no regard to research and no regard to respect these people that have earned and deserved it. I also clearly recall Mike Scamperley having the audacity to assault our assistant fire chief for taking out his title pay while they worked without a chief, telling them to enjoy the money. He then, very recently, applauded DPW for sweeping fighter left from his movie theater, when he could have very simply grabbed a gun and swept on himself. As a taxpayer, I take serious issue with our money being used to sweep left from his business while our overworked first responders are expected to take extra duties for free. What a very sad time for our city. We have a mayor who laughs about the divide between citizens and council, telling reporters he wants a detail with four, two, three on it, and doesn't even know he has a key to his own city hall. We have three posse's, as Steve put this, obviously feeding his words and are playing with like a fiddle to reach their own vindictive goals. All of the four of you have accomplishments you've taken off that have created unnecessary drama, fear for city employees, and have divided our community at half. You have stripped three council members of the ability to seek legal advice from our city attorney, forcing them to make important decisions they don't even know are legal. Our charter was put together by bigger men than you, and for reasons to avoid exactly what's happening now, tyranny and abuse of power. All of this is being done for your own amusement and our city's success. You've turned your back on our first responders, taxpayers, and the citizens who voted you in. To Mike Scamperley, you have successfully fooled our community into believing that you have heart in our best interest and minds. Congratulations on that. Steve Fisher, I know your kind. You lied and stepped on friends who sit in that chair, and you'll turn your back on these three others when you know longer you've done as well. John Rees, nothing. I have nothing to say to you. Still, still allow. It's clear that you're here for the swing ball. Come on. How are you allowing these people to use you like this baffles me. Stand up like a man and stop this madness. You know this is wrong, and it's not too late for you to regain at least some of the respect you lost.
Thank you, Cindy. Time's up. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Anyone else like to speak?
I just got a couple. My first thing is, I got a copy of the proposed state negotiations between Augsburg and St. Lawrence County. I just read it today, okay? There's some interesting things in here, some interesting figures in here, okay? That could benefit this community. So if this group could sit down with the county and negotiate what's in here that's only going to benefit this community, so I do have to say it's a step in the right direction. One other comment, and to kind of piggyback on what Mr. Wang said, we all know, we all know this community is divided, divided more than ever before. And we're all the city staff that's at an all-time low. I think we all have to ask ourselves why. Could it be cussing with the police department? And I'd like to just piggyback on that. I come up Fourth Street today, in front of the local business, we had one patrolman putting a cuss on a suspect with four other people standing behind him. It's a good thing that it was very civil, because that officer, me, I went around the corner, okay, and came back by, and I said, something happened, I guess somebody's got to make something. But if that guy was within Lauer Hall, then that guy was in a lot of trouble, okay? You're going to probably say, well, with other people on the, you're right, I went up a block, and there's two more people at a house, okay? Could it be not appointing a police chief in five months? Could it be not appointing a temporary fire chief, but we had the chance to do so? Could it be doing away with the recreation department, which at one time was the envy of the North Country? Could it be the way everyone at this table is treated? Could it be the lack of communication amongst you people sitting at this table? Could it be the motives from the majority, as many people in this community are saying? I would like to be part of the solution to move the city forward. I've lived here all my life, and I've paid taxes here all my life. But I'm going to put the onus on you, Mayor, Mr. Mayor. It's going to start with your leadership role. You've got to get the rest of these people on board. Each and every one of you must be able to take constructive criticism where it's due, and you've got to use it to make necessary constructive changes and improvement in this community. Put politics aside and treat each and every citizen and every city employee with respect and sincerity. After attending the last council meeting, I sat home, it was very ironic that you people passed the resolution calling for city council to approve all change orders for the sewage treatment project. Comments of, we have to do our fiduciary duties, there was no communication from the last city manager on change orders. I guess my concern would be, the ironic part of that is, you have three other people sitting at this table, okay, when they ask certain questions, need certain information for their fiduciary duty, okay, and communication for them to do their job, it's not given, okay? That's not the way this community's going to move forward. It's time, we all have ink in our face sometimes. It's time you're going to have to swallow your pride a little bit, okay? Pull the trousers up, and get out there, and make sure everybody knows that, you know, you're sincere. Hey, nothing wrong with saying we made a mistake. Nothing wrong. I do it every day. Every day, okay? I was involved with the people for forty-some years. Every day, Bud Walker woke up, somebody was mad at. But you know what? Police had the decency and the courtesy to go speak, go face to face. And I think that's what some of you people have to do. And, you know, we talked before about, it's got to be a fifty-fifty way. And I look back and talk with people, talk with some of you people sitting at this table, talk with people that work for the city. And I believe that, at the time of forty people made your council, it was what you had to do. If you would have went and sat down with the fire department, if you would have went down and sat with the police department, if you would have sat down with the recreation commission, just maybe, just maybe, things could have worked out. Maybe other people have other ideas that might be helpful, okay? My last thing is, hold to, just remember, tough times never last, but positive and professional people do. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Is there anyone else in the audience would like to speak? Kathy, do we have anyone remotely?
I do not see any hands raised, Mayor.
Anyone attending remotely, raise your hand, Kathy will answer you.
There are no hands, sir.
And this brings us to...
There are no hands, sir.
And this brings us to correspondence. Do we have any correspondence?
Yes.
And this brings us to council action. Our first item of business is an ordinance to amend the official city map to dissolve a portion of Paper Hayward Street measuring approximately sixty feet by two hundred and twelve feet off the Hayward Street, just west of John Street, and was tabled at the August 10, 2020 city council meeting. Does any member wish to make a motion to take this resolution off the table?
I'm waiting on space like that.
Oh, we... You just have to wait a...
Okay, that's a question.
Is anyone wish to take this off table? I will. Do we have a second? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Who's the second?
The second.
Councilor Dillaw?
Yes.
Councilor Fisher?
No.
Councilor Kennedy?
We are voting to take it off the table and our breath.
Yes.
And yeah.
We're taking it off the table, Steve. We're bringing it back for motion.
We're just bringing it off so we can discuss it.
Okay. Yes.
Well, if you said no, that's why I asked to clarify, because I thought, okay.
So just to clarify, Councilor Fisher did yes. Okay, thank you. Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Councilor Reese?
Yes.
Councilor Campbell Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Approved.
And now we need a motion to amend. I'll make that mo... Oh, I'm sorry. It's a little... There's a little confusion in this little foot spot here. So discussion on this, possibly?
What is the proposed amendment?
Well, actually, we're just discussing we're bringing it off table, and then the...
Is Andrew here? So like, I'm just asking if I broke my ankle. I was just wanting Andrew to give a synopsis for me to catch me up quickly. I read all of what was sent down, the various emails from the parties concerned.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So at the last meeting, the Council did not take action on the request to dissolve a portion of Paper Hayward Street because we received a subdivision request from one of the agents and property owners, which, if completed, would impact what the state is able to actually dissolve. So the subdivision was filed with the city, with the county clerk's office, and has been completed. So the parcel at 404 North Meadow is now two parcels. There's a parcel at 404 North Meadow, and there's now a new parcel that has rented on Paper Hayward. Therefore, we, as a municipality, are required to provide access to any parcel, even if that access is via Paper Street. So we are only able to legally dissolve a portion of the street being approximately sixty feet by a hundred and ten feet that will provide the minimum rented of seventy-five feet for the parcel that is newly created on Paper Hayward Street. Seventy-five feet is the required rented for a local law in the single-family district. That street would have to be fully developed and infrastructure extended to full seventy-five feet before that law was developed under our current zoning regulations.
I just didn't under... I don't understand, and I realize things just happen sometimes, like you get a request or whatever, but why weren't... Why wasn't everybody's concerns taken into consideration before the recommendation was given? So on the other one, I curd his street, you're selling a portion of, proposing to sell a portion of Curtis, and it's the most immediate access to three developmental lots on one side and two on the other. I know, and I know they have access from the other way. And on this street here, while I've expressed the city manager as well as a couple of counselors that maybe a better approach would be to, you know, accommodate the request, recognize that a sixty-foot paper street isn't necessary for a limited number of lots, and propose a right-of-way or permanent easement so that those people aren't denied the easier access to... Which also requires, you know, we have a minimum standard for our streets. And what I talked about was potentially, you know, a lane standard or even, you know, even if you just wanted to put a right-of-way and let the property owner deal with it in terms of a private driveway. So there's a lot of different options without, you know, I think you've got to take other people's considerations into account.
Doesn't just do that?
I think it could have been handled, you know?
Now that the subdivision is created, doesn't just do that?
The amendment would reflect the subdivision is now in my mind.
So it takes everybody into a cup.
Correct. When he does not. I'm sorry, he does not. You're saying I have to drop to seventy-five line? Push, it's not. I have to...
I'm sorry, this isn't the time. I'm sorry. You... Um, sorry, we had...
So it seems pretty simple, right? We had two people...
Let me just ask a question.
Drop to the chair.
Not right this moment.
So in this particular case, it really impacts largely two property owners. And, you know, if she wants access to her land and her lots that are now a subdivision to try and prevent this, I guess, why couldn't a seventy-five-foot, you know, right-of-way or permanent easement be there or that piece be taken out for her and they can go through with the sale? I don't see that here, but maybe I'm missing something. I think there's both about that a little bit in the last meeting, I believe. There is Mr. Smith and Benji, is it Benji? Yeah. Dr. Benji, I understand. Have possibly, maybe, I mean, I did think that.
Um, well, there's still access from the other side. We're only found one end of the street.
Well, once you dissolve the street, you've eliminated the access, it's no longer Paper Street. But I can't... Huh? That's deeper than... Just one second. Let's let staff and look.
Um, there's still access from the other end. We're not dissolving the whole street. We're just the end, right?
You all received a memo from me that articulates the option title option one, and you should also receive the map in color that I gave you last week. You probably didn't receive one in color this week, but I did give you all the last week. The portion that can lawfully be dissolved is one hundred and ten feet and thus there about from John Street, the intersection of Paper Hayward and John Street, and the full width, the full right-of-way of sixty feet. It comes, it does come into the property that is referenced as proposed subdivision parcel B, that subdivision again has now been finalized. But it does maintain the required seventy-five feet of rented under our current zoning code that is required in the single-family district, which is what we are required to provide to any parcel to be available.
And this is staff recommendation to go ahead with the sale of this property?
This is staff recommendation along with the recommendation of the planning board.
This is to dissolve it, this particular resolution, not to sell it yet.
Right, to dissolve the portion of the paper...
Dissolve that. So dissolve it to, so it can be sold?
Correct.
Yes.
You're all standing around where we want to line. What would it bend in the map now? If the regulatory line reached the threshold of the street will...
So I brought up the color one.
So this, what happens when the... So the new proposal is the hundred and ten feet that faces...
John Street.
And that's it? And then we... So we still have a paper street that there's an interested party, but that's not addressed yet?
It is. That's... The remaining portion of Paper Hayward will remain Paper Hayward. It will provide access to the parcel that is referred to as parcel B.
So we're halfway there, okay? I mean, he wanted to buy the rest of Paper Street, but things have changed, okay?
Correct.
So we still own it, that portion.
So the street that remains as Paper Street can be developed at any twenty times by the property owner, which you can develop as parcel B.
I'm glad it's been changed. Better than it was when it started, though.
That's our public hearing.
Yep. Now, do we commence public hearing for this now with the landowners? Kathy, I'm a little... Yes?
We already had a public hearing.
Well, we had our public hearing.
So if the Council wishes to change this proposal, makes change, then you're going to need a motion to amend the ordinance and a second.
Okay. I'll make a motion to amend. Do I have a second? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Can you... So the amendment is now the hundred and ten feet versus the whole?
Correct. I was trying to clarify that.
And do we need to have a public hearing and a revised one now? Okay? Like that? If this is a few points, then I could... Please. This is...
Then let's... We'll let...
Okay, I'll speak as I can go. We've talked a couple of different times, and I thought we've done the reason. I've lived here forty-eight years, and you all know I've maintained it for forty-eight years. That's been fifty-six years. There's two councilmen, two weeks ago, and I'm like, I'm not going to be here again. But let's explain this. It's sixty by two hundred and twelve. So if you sell sixty by a hundred or sixty by a hundred and ten, she's still going to have a hundred or a hundred and twelve feet access, which is a lot more than seventy-five feet if they add. My thought, we had a reasonable deal between the two of us. We buy the whole thing, she gets the back quarter, which would be for a hundred and twelve by thirty. That gives her all kinds of access to that property, which wasn't, uh, wasn't divided before then. Uh, I thought it was very reasonable. I said, if you have it for a quarter, I, where we pay for it, we sell it to you for a quarter, you know, twenty-five percent. And she agreed to that. Is there, is there an injection? I don't... Is there an injection that was being proposed or... Just explain, just explain. Okay, just explain what's happened, okay? She said she didn't agree. She said she agreed to my wife, agreed to me, but there's still problems. She don't want my... I don't need the weapon. I've maintained it forever, and I'll keep maintaining it. If I have a front part, that's fine, because I'm going to have my house. My son will have my house. I have a house next door, so that combines.
Yep.
It's never going to be a public street again. Put on a tax roll for public. She's talking about building a house back there. I've lived there forty-eight years. It's a swamp back there. I don't know how I'm going to go there. I have to be on stilts to survive. And I'm no contractor by the way. And if she builds it off the land, she's going to flood me up my house combined. So that can't happen either. So maybe she can build it all back there. She thinks she can, that's fine. We're not, I'm not here to argue with her, but I thought we had an understanding. But she does have a... If you go a hundred feet back, if you propose a hundred and ten, she still has a hundred two, uh, a hundred two feet. It's two hundred and twelve altogether. So the hundred and ten detracted to one hundred two. I want this one.
So is this okay? In your...
I'm fine with what's happening, and I, you know, I thought this was going to be real comfortable.
I know.
I've been...
I've been sitting here for ten years, nothing.
Okay. Well, I think I'm pretty clear, but I don't understand.
I think you want to understand that I just want to end there to explain to me, how do I have a seventy-five foot front? That's all. I don't see a seventy-five foot front. She's saying if she gives them, she gives Mr. Smith sixty by hundred and ten, she, I will still have a seventy-five. I don't. I will end up with seventy-three point eighty-three. Please come to the map and please explain this. How do I have seventy-three? I, this is all of one thing, and I can show it to every member of the council. There's a map in front of you. If you please look at it with me. I have, this is my parcel. It's eighty-three point eighty-three. They are proposing a hundred from here and a ten from here. If you subtract ten from eighty-three point eighty-three, it ends up seventy-three point eighty-three. It will never end up seventy-five. I'm just asking how is that possible?
That's not even...
It's still not my seventy-five. We say you have a seventy-five. I'm saying, no. All I'm proposing, Mr. Smith, how it finishes at a hundred, that's what he's having. It's a hundred point oh five. Let's talk at sixty times a hundred point oh five. Why should we extend beyond his, beyond his map to make me short on parcel B? I just need an explanation. Does anybody want to see the map? Yeah, so I want an explanation by the planning company. How this parcel B, when you take ten out of it, it ends up to be seventy-three point eighty-three. It does not end up to be seventy-five. So my proposal is she has to solve it really. It has to finish sixty by a hundred, just to give Mr. Smith his landline property, but not for extension.
Mayor, just one point of clarification. Appreciate both of the residents, and just wanted to make sure that we're not following this directly to any of the proposing, where the client's going to break, and where we're going to recommend caution and respect. You won't dare to see the heat or the party is going to be using the help. Fairly, just one part. So I feel like we've got the definition for this event, this property, and the venue where the street will remain, have a facility, a parcel that will be...
Okay. Any further discussion? So I guess we're at a motion to amend?
That's correct. So this would be a roll call to amend.
Okay. Did we bring it forward in second? Yeah.
We're accepting the subdivision. Is that the amendment?
It's a motion to amend the ordinance to accept the sixty-five one pass. It's to amend, and that will vote through. And then it will add amended.
So I bring the motion forward, and then I have a second? We've done that? Okay. Okay.
The motion to make the motion there and Councilor Campbell...
Okay. Would you... Please call the roll.
Councilor Fisher?
Yes.
Councilor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Councilor Reese?
Yes.
Councilor Campbell Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Councilor Dillaw?
Yes.
Approved.
Now, would the city clerk please call the roll for the ordinance as amended?
Councilor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Councilor Reese?
Yes.
Councilor Campbell Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Councilor Dillaw?
Yes.
Councilor Fisher?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next business is a local law to amend the city charter in regard to a residency requirement for the position of police chief. No, we're on next. Or is that next?
Yes.
It is next, yes. So our next business, our next item of business is a local law to amend the city charter in regard to a residency requirement for the position of chief of police. Would any member of council like to introduce that?
I would. Local law, I guess it gets a number later, right? Twenty twenty. A local law to amend the Oxfordburg city charter in regard to a residency requirement for the position of chief of police, being enacted by the city council of the city of Oxfordburg as follows. Section one, Article eleven, the city charter, as follows. Section three eighty-eight, the department established, trauma head, bowling. A, there shall be a department of police, the head of which shall be the chief of police. New language added says the chief of police need not be a resident of the city or state at the time of appointment, amongst residing in the city while serving this position. Section two, effectively, this law, local law, should take effect twenty days after the date of...
Section two, effectively, this law, local law, should take effect twenty days after the date of filing, to the new or state secretary of state, I assume.
I'll second that.
I'd just like to point out, this is the exact same language actually, that, uh, is, is required in the charter, as a residency require, requirement for the city manager as well.
Discussion?
I mean, uh, I just, I guess I just, uh, other than that, which sharpens from city manager, in terms of, you're not shouting, it's jelly, and it was here before, but again, the wisdom behind this, other than, uh, your explanation. Why, what, 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 why anybody, why wouldn't we have other agencies that, that operate within this, that live outside the confines of the city? And our, our employees over the years, that this has never been an issue before. I'm curious as to the wisdom, and why now, especially in light of the current sway, or not the current, uh, current temperature towards, uh, certain individuals, uh, that work within the law enforcement community. I don't see how this has any bearing on anybody's ability to perform the duty. It's never been an issue in the past, and I surely don't see it as, as an issue going forward. We have some, some of our police officers and other employees that reside outside the city, but are within earshot of, of emergency response. I just, I don't support the resolution, I don't see the wisdom.
I personally don't see the, the, this, this resolution being necessary. Uh, because like former chief Paul Nash said, you've had other police chiefs, and they have been there within minutes. I mean, I think that, you know, with the level of loyalty we've seen in the department that comes through time and time again, I don't think we need to put a residency requirement on it. These men and women that work in the police, whether they live in town, or whether they live ten miles outside town, they're still spending their tax dollars in town. They may not be paying city taxes, but they are still going to our grocery stores, they're still coming into town, their families are coming into town. Their children are going to local schools. If there, why should we uproot entire families for one person to want to better themselves, and better the place we're living? They're already making a sacrifice. I don't see why it's necessary that they have to live right inside the city line, and so I will not support it.
Any further discussion?
I guess my question is, why wouldn't you wanna be the resident of the city?
I can tell you why people don't wanna be the resident of the city, we're sick up here, this is why people don't wanna live here.
Yeah. Any further discussion?
I, uh, I'm gonna echo, uh, the sentiment that was expressed tonight by the public, very highly respected individuals, uh, from, from my perspective, uh, you, you know, I was wishy-washy on this resolution, and, and thought about the past, and when this issue's come up before, but Rick made some good points, what are the arguments, where, where's the water? You, you can't disagree with the fact that Chief Kennedy lived outside of town, and was here in a second, in any situation. I, I just, I see no reason for it, Mr. Hackett spoke to it, uh, as well, uh, somebody else, I'm sorry, Doug, and, uh, I, I'm not gonna support it at this moment in time for Augsburg.
Any further discussion? I'm sorry, not the time. I'm not the time, sorry. Um, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Councilor Powers?
No.
Councilor Reese?
Yes.
Councilor Chamberley?
No.
Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Councilor Villalobos?
Yes.
Councilor Fisher?
Yes.
Councilor Kennedy?
No.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by Director of Planning and Development, Andrea Smith.
This owner sixty-nine, an ordinance provides for the sale of city-owned property at public auction.
That's probably good. Paper Street, good, 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 good.
Good. Um... Does it, yeah, who, did someone introduce it?
I'll move it.
Okay.
Second. Uh, discussion?
I'm sorry, I missed the second.
No discussion? Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Uh...
Well, did you have a discussion? Okay.
So this is, we, we, we had voted to dissolve the paper street already. And this is the actual sale of property at public auction. Yeah, this is what I, 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 you know, I, I'd love to sell it to you guys, and I'm sure you would get approval, I just, um, I've expressed my concerns, that I don't think this is a good procedure and process for us, I'd like to do it with you guys. I just think that there ought to be, and when you're completing a, a tail end of a paper street that's intended to go through the both ways, and provides access to developable lots, that to sell off the empty, and deny them access, um, I, I wouldn't like it, maybe you wouldn't like it, I don't know. If that were true, and I just think it could've been done better in terms of a right of way, or, or a lay, or done... Yeah, but he doesn't have the street furniture, though. I know, but he doesn't have the street furniture from the lots on the other way, and then guy across...
Nobody else has street furniture from the last one, third street. It's paper street, right next to my house. He lives on the entrance street, he goes down to the entrance, he owns two lots in the back of the...
My, my point is, is that, uh, it, it should've been a right of way, or something, or common to the other, just thought, I'm gonna vote no one.
I have a simple solution. The tree, cut the trees down from the streets, or, it cuts down my side of the driveway, everybody gets my grass.
Man, I think we need to call some point of order here, I mean, this is getting kind of back and forth, no, no, I understand, we've gone back to several different people tonight, but not the point of council, we need some type of order here.
Uh, any other discussion by councillors? Kathy?
I, I think that... I think whenever you're selling, uh, city property, it requires three quarters of a vote, so I think it requires six votes. There's still people who are voting, understand that, that, that I correct?
Five, isn't it?
We're sending it to public auction.
Well, yeah, you're, you're selling at a public auction. That was your resolution from back in January, to put all the tax-free property on, through public auction. Mayor, the law should have come out here to...
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Councilor Reese?
Uh, no.
Councilor Chamberley?
Yes.
Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Councilor Villalobos?
Yes.
Councilor Fisher? Councilor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business is a local law to amend the Augsburg City Charter in regard to the powers and duties of the city manager. Would, uh, a member of the city council like to introduce that?
Yes, there was, uh, the local law to amend the Augsburg City Charter in regard to the powers and duties of the city manager, being enacted by the city council, the city of Augsburg is fouled, section one, article four, C nineteen, paragraph two, the city charter is amended as follows. Kinda hard to follow, but paragraph two says, after consulting with and analysis, after an affirmative vote of a majority of the city council, point and when necessary, for sure, the city suspend or remove any city department head, except the city attorney, provided for by and of this charter, except as otherwise provided by laws, by this charter, or by pushing out rules, adopted pursuant to this charter. And it said, the city manager may authorize, without the council approval, any administrative office serving subjects to city manager's directions and supervision to exercise these policies, respect these ordinance, and that opposite department, office, or agency. And the effective date is twenty days after the date of filing, filing, the new or state secretary of state, I assume.
I'll second that. Discussion?
So, I'll start off discussion, uh... I wrote a few things here, basically puts the power to hire and fire in the hands of city council, uh, instead of the city manager, completely changes the form of government, creates a nepotistic situation where politics rule in the city, instead of positions being filled by non-political, merit-based, uh, type of positions, which is the point of city, uh, civil service that was brought up earlier. The current charter tries to at least prevent nepotism with the city manager form of government, clearly means the council will be micromanaging department heads, hiring and firing as it please, uh, you know, it just, it just sets us back. I mean, somebody said a hundred and thirty years, somebody said fifty years. This, this city manager form of government was created, okay, I'm, I'm a history teacher, to stop this nepotism. I mean, sure, it still probably happens here and there, but the, the, the point is, is, it's, this is just blatantly saying, oh, we're gonna, we, we wanna be nepotistic in this city, we want politics to rule. I told you guys before, if this thing passes, I'm not voting for anybody, because it puts us in a situation that we're not supposed to be in with this form of government. I think it's nonsense, and, 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 you know, to quote the Watertown Times, or whatever Doug brought up, the bit point, uh, I mean, you trust a guy, or you put a guy in a position that you're supposed to trust him, but now you're saying, well, we don't trust you to make the right decisions, we're gonna make them. It, it's micromanaging them, it's micromanaging city manager, department heads, nonsense. I don't see anybody up here that's qualified to fill that man's position right there, right now, not, not sitting at this table. And, and that's what he's here for, he's a professional, and he's supposed to do this. Uh, and this just changes the charter, the, the community has spoken, they're not happy with these charter changes. Uh, it's nonsense, it's nonsense. I, I, I can't even imagine where this is coming from, other than serving somebody's ego for power. And, and, thank you, and I'm done.
Thank you, Dan.
Yeah?
Anyone else?
I, I couldn't, I couldn't agree more, uh, this, this defies all transparency, this defies all aspects of holding government, that, uh, brings nepotism right to this forefront. I don't see how, I don't, this is, I, I see no other reason as to how this came about, and how it even, quite frankly, got called second, to be honest with you.
I did that.
We'll move that, I'm more aware of that. But that aside, I, this, this is, is ridiculous. It, uh, it's a slight to the community, it's a slight to the taxpayers, it's a slight to the form of government, and civil service was brought up, civil service was brought into play in, in, in politics across the state to avoid this kind of conflict, and now, as part-time employees, we're gonna be judging a department head with information that's too potential rumor mill, or, or information received here? How many special meetings are we gonna have? We have a set system, we have a set form of government that did be adhered to, and again, there's no lawyer in the house, and I'd be really curious to know what his position is now. Why we even brought him in here, if this was your agenda? It's beyond me, and I won't support it, I think it's ridiculous, it, I don't think it's a power grab, I know it's a power grab.
Anyone else?
I'll take a step.
Okay.
So, we are put up here to, and voted into office, it's our job to listen to the people. In my years on council, although there hasn't been a lot of them, I have listened, and I have voted for things that I have not personally agreed with, but I've listened to the public that came up here, they elected us to be their voice in the way the city is run. It doesn't have to be something I agree with, or disagree with, but the public comes up, and the public speaks, it's my job as a councillor to convey their wishes, as long as they align with the goals of the city. And I firmly believe that, after listening to the people that came up tonight, they took the time to speak with us, the people that have called me on the phone, sent me emails, we have a due diligence to do to the voters, to the people who showed up at the polls and put me in this position, and I, in my own goodwill and conscience, cannot vote for them. This is not what the voters are asking for, and we had several people stand up here tonight, and the phone calls I received, I will not support them. Based on those merits.
This is the, uh, um... In the same way that St. Lawrence County Government works, it operates, they were a professional administrator, and if we elected officials to appoint the department head, it would take twice the volume as that. It's the same way every other county, village, and this county operates, made one that doesn't operate this way. And this is a compromise. We're the only ones that do this, there's ten thousand people here on Augsburg, oh my God, the charter, we can't touch it. This is a very good resolution. It's a check and balance. People are elected to represent people, don't need, I, the utmost of respect for who I put in that position.
Who, you? This is the council, there's no one individual who doesn't...
Please.
So...
Please, this is next time.
I don't think it's, uh, like I say, it's the same way St. Lawrence County Government works, it's the same way all the villages and towns work, and I think it provides a very good check and balance, where the manager still makes a recommendation, it does the appointment, but you have, you do have to have an affirmative vote, and I would hope that whoever he recommends has full support, and then all of a sudden, another vote for that person, whoever it may be.
This is all for referendum. At this point, I'm probably changing the charter on the fly. This, is that, that's what's happening. We're not convening the charter commission.
Oh, the charter's been broken before, your election was an example, it happened.
We have every opportunity to fix that point.
You guys, you guys were on the council, you had to fix it, but, so... Any, any further discussion on this?
Yeah, I'm asking, are we gonna need a referendum?
No.
No, it's, uh, it is subject to, it may be subject to a permissive referendum, and that would be high. Someone would have...
How much does a referendum cost? We're all about saving money here. What, what's it gonna cost to put this out on the ballot?
We'll have to see, Mike.
Yeah, we'll have to see, it'll be interesting, we're on budget time, huh?
Well, Mike, if, you've never brought back any solutions, and you, three views were gonna bring back suggestions for cuts, and that's never happened. You never brought anything forward.
What am I gonna bring forward, that anyone of you are gonna support?
Oh, you never brought any...
The police department working, so much overtime, they can't, they, they're being forced to work, and you're worried about cutting, you cut, you cut, cut, cut. At what point do we have to look in and say, where's the quality of life?
What do you think, since we've been up here? Nothing have we built on it, nothing.
Everything has been ripped apart, and at what point do we stop ripping apart and look at what we've got to do? At some point, we need to look at it and be like, we have, our citizens deserve a certain level of public safety, that you have almost single-handedly, with the other ones, ripped away from our community, at what point do any of us ever stop making...
The toilet in this city is with your city employees.
Not everyone.
So the four, okay.
Okay. Please, I've had some order. See? I've had some order. So...
So I got something else to say, and...
Yes.
You know, somebody brought up the point of, who's gonna want the position in January? Or whenever we decide to go from our intern to, what, it, it, basically, it says you're gonna hire a city manager that does what? Kowtows to a majority of people that are gonna do all the hiring and firing for him, what's the job description?
I mean, how can we respond to salaries, they're not gonna do a goddamn thing, that we don't really need them, I mean, you're already trying to change the form of government.
I've had some order here.
So, how disrespectful is this to the city manager?
You can portray it that way, Dan, it has nothing...
It's, it's absolutely about that.
We all watched our previous...
Excuse me, I have to go.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I wanna make people run to the room and clean it again, all right? Uh, I think it completely disrespects, uh, the current city manager. And not only the current city manager, but any future city manager. I mean, it's clearly, Ben, that, uh, we're gonna run the show, and whatever we say goes. We're gonna hire, fire, and any department head that doesn't do exactly what we think needs to be done, because, because we know everything. And, and that's it, and that's what this resolution does, it's nonsense.
Same way, same way Ruth Doyle is the county administrator, she operates under the same rules.
Nepotism, nepotism is when you hire a relative, no one's proposing to hire a relative, just like Claire, yeah.
And I'd like to speak, I watched her previous DPDW person torture our citizens for years. And all, and I talked to all you people on the council, and you all complained about him, but he was buddies with our city manager. And you never did anything, till one night, when I stood at that podium, and you went in executive session, you came out, and you voted to fire... voted to fire him, and you told the city manager, if she didn't fire him, it was her job. So don't talk about the charter, cuz that's what happened that year.
I don't believe you what happened in that executive session, A, you weren't there, and B, I can't tell you what happened in that executive session.
I was told by two counselors. So any further discussion? Go ahead. I'm done. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Campbell?
No.
Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Nilla?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Nope.
Counselor Powers?
No.
Counselor Reese?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by Director of Planning and Development, Andrea Smith.
Resolution number seventy-five, a resolution to approve the sale of surplus property located at one fifteen Oak Street in Richard Michael's address.
Perfect. Thank you. So basically, this, we have a house without with a.
We have to have a motion.
Oh, I'll I'll motion to move it.
Got it.
All right. So basically, we have a house that doesn't have a driveway, and the city owns where the driveway probably should be or has been used for years. So we're just basically selling this guy a driveway, putting a little bit of property on the tax rolls, and doing it without going through public auction, which is the way that we've done things for years, if the property qualifies for that particular instance, because that's what we have in front of us.
That's correct, Council. So what what I'm asking tonight, cuz we've all had some discussion about this, we were as farcical upon the surplus tax list, as is our procedure, as given the legal ruling in twenty fourteen by Anthony Silver's office, we've been following this procedure for a while. So I'm just, I wanna understand, this is broadsaw, is it according to that procedure? The staff has looked at it, and if you look for obvious reasons, you've got the parcel of it where it's located. It doesn't really make a lot of sense for anything else to be happening with. So we are asking to use the the authority that we have to to act upon the individual's request to sell this property directly, not take it to another level of auction or exemption. We're all there are leave about to do this. It's just a question of how the council want to operate going forward with these items. Would like to see it have the tools in our toolbox to be able to make, you know, recommendations to see if this makes sense for expedience of procedure, certainly understanding that there's there's lots of parcels, even some on surplus with perhaps, that there is some level of controversy or multiple interests, that again, we may make the recommendation. We don't value the most on the surplus, we we take it from auction. I just think this is one that arrives to the level of, quite frankly, if it qualifies, it's another problem for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions?
I'm all in favor of putting the property on tax roll, what is done through a bid process or public auction. Uh I really am uncomfortable voting for it, um because I I do think that the general municipal law dictates that. And uh we talked about it, and I would really like to see a policy put in place that simplifies the process, and it looks at unusual circumstances like this, where it makes sense to sell it for the adjacent property over. Those things can be put into writing and adopted. I just, my my concern is, is like, we have another request in writing through someone's attorney for another lot, and I realize there's a difference.
There is.
But that's a cause for um an action right there. So I'm I I feel a lot better if we just follow the state law that says public auction or bid. And um, I will know, and everybody else can go guess, and that's satisfying.
Well, it's also a code. I mean, it's a house, and a property has to have a driveway. And and without this, the house can't uh, you know.
It's not done right.
You're not supposed to uh sell a house without a.
It's just not done right. I I have no objection to selling it.
Well, it's then you open up an issue with the code. Now he now that that homeowner has no off-street parking. So as far, you know, when you have that to consider too.
If we had a policy that took those things into consideration, then it would be an adopted policy, we would do anything we want.
Let's write one.
So the city already has a policy. The city has a policy to use state law to do just this. This is perfectly legal. We've done it for years. When you guys came aboard, you said, we don't wanna do it that way, we don't like it. And so now, we have a situation that this is the only thing that makes sense, is doing it the way state law provides. And and there's objection? Really? Come on, sell the guy the driveway. You know?
Any further discussion? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Nilla?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yep.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reese?
No, for the reasons stated.
Counselor Campbell?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by City Manager, Stephen Jelly.
Operator, the extension of the airport security agreement is modified to the Augsburg Regional Authority. Whereas the current agreement between the City of Augsburg and the Augsburg Regional Authority for the provision of airport security services, uh the City of Augsburg Police Department expires on August thirty twenty twenty. And whereas the City of Augsburg and the Augsburg Regional Authority desire to continue those services for additional four months, now therefore be resolved, the City of Augsburg Council hereby authorizes the extension of the agreement with modifications of the airport. Remittance payment within sixty days for additional four months, to expire on December thirty-one twenty twenty to be a further resolved. The city manager prepares a post-airport security agreement for the period of January one twenty twenty-one to December thirty-one twenty twenty-three. The council will give it to September fourteen twenty twenty-three. Council will be afforded resolve that copy of this treaty we can give to the Augsburg Regional Authority.
I'll move that.
Got it.
All right.
Uh discussion?
I have uh I have a few concerns over this. I am all for the airport. I am very concerned as how we are going to be able to provide this service to the airport. I think that in our current state of our police department, we can't, I mean, I I support that we will go another four months, but I think until we can lock ourselves in, we need a plan. We need to know what we're going to do for staffing. There are some serious, serious issues at hand, and we can't commit to something that we don't have staffing for. We are, like I said tonight, we have, um our guys, they're running ragged. What are we gonna do? At what point? At some point, you draw a line in the sand. I don't wanna see the airport go anywhere. We gotta give something to our police department. They can't continue to operate like this.
No, uh agreeing, Counselor. And so, as you know, it's just been here sixty days. So after completing the assessment we have, there's no question. One of the things, I propose to Council, ongoing in the in the future budget, will be that reimbursable positions like this will be, will be positions will be established with the requesting, whatever the the excuse me, the personnel we need to staff the airport will be hired, and largely used for that. Also, school resource officers, no doubt. Uh that will that will not be considered part of the normal staffing for the police department. Counselor will have to make a decision, there's no doubt. I'll have some courses of action at the next meeting for you, where we are currently with the level of staffing in the police department, and and recommendations of of what we can do with that current staffing. Some of it's due to positions that uh we're not allowed to fill for this year's budget, one of that is due to positions uh we got off there. There's there's definitely a staffing issue in the police department that is going to call for Council to to understand, and then direct what services that we will seek to provide, uh as we provide relief. I agree, the current schedules we're working out are are running ragged, and overtime on top of that, that's too much. We're gonna have, we're gonna pull out that schedule that that's not matching. Uh we we have to have the numbers there. And again, there's there's two things driving that. So what we need to do at the moment uh is continue to provide this critical service to the airport. Uh the airport is critical to our community for a number of reasons. So um I propose this four-month extension, so that we continue to do that. While I bring you all uh the the staffing options we're gonna have with the police department, and then ultimately, uh we're working to the budget, uh this will be clear, for what we're going to do for twenty twenty-one, specifically, and yeah, and we'll have to make those decisions. But I would say if somebody comes again, like the Regional Authority or the school, and and they're paying for those positions, those positions really will be partitioned if we get them back, uh that that would just be gravely will, uh but we're gonna have to allot positions specifically for that. We can't we can't use it anymore as kind of one big melting pot of manpower, and if Rob Peter's paid holiday, sooner later, you know, one of the others will come. And that's where we are.
Our citizens deserve the highest level of public safety. They've come accustomed to that. So I just wanted to ensure that we can continue to offer that to our citizens.
So what I understand from your comments, and you are supporting and you recognize the need that there genuinely need to have, there would be some of the funding from the actual agencies that that would provide the district service for, um you, I'm genuinely concerned about our public safety as well, very much so. I I know staffing, I know staffing issues, I know staffing needs. I argue them every day, and I'm going forward with that. I I'm genuinely concerned about the potential burnout of our frontline public safety officers, genuinely concerned. And we we this is something that needs to be addressed. BS plus I, and recognize that we provide a service to our citizens and our taxpayers, and that needs to be on the forefront. Understood, Counselor? All supportive.
I would I'd like to echo both the the concerns for public safety in this community. And I understand what's what's going on here. I also understand that uh we don't need to lose this airport, and it's my understanding that ESA, Essential Air Service, bids go out in October, and it's absolutely necessary we get a long-term agreement in place by the September meeting, uh so that we don't lose what we have already. These airlines uh are depending upon a security agreement, a long-term security agreement. It's my understanding, at least two to four years, uh if they're gonna stay at all. Uh I also know that our OBVA is looking at uh some major grant money to make additions, things like that, to this airport. And and in order for this stuff to come to fruition, uh the state and the feds both need to see uh a long-term security agreement. So it's I I can't stress enough having something in place for our September meeting. Of course, I'm gonna support this. And yes, to echo the public safety concerns in this community, uh our our police department is stressed. So please, thank you. I hope everybody votes for this.
Kathy, would you uh please call the roll?
Counselor Nilla?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yep.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reese?
Counselor Stane.
Counselor Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by Director of Planning and Development, Andrea Smith.
To zone number seventy-seven, a resolution introducing an ordinance of providing for public notice and public hearing with regard to the sale of the young property. Be resolved that.
As far as I'm concerned, right?
That's fine.
We've been over it several times, haven't we?
Any member wish to bring this motion? I will. Again.
I'll say it.
Discussion. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yep.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reese?
Yes.
Counselor Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Nilla?
Yes.
Approved.
And this brings us to citizen participation at this time. Any person would like to address council, please come down to the podium, and you'll have two minutes.
First of all, as a taxpayer, I'm very, very, very disappointed with what just happened here. You guys want people's support. How in God's name can you expect us to give you support when you do something like that? I ask you the question, a couple of councils I've talked to about citizens' participation won't answer questions. And your direct comment to me was, no, we don't have to answer your question. But if you asked a question in the meeting, the following meeting, we can get back to it. Well, the last meeting, I asked you three questions. Okay? So I'm gonna ask you again tonight, and as you said, I hope you can answer. That's out of your mouth. Okay? What's the status of our police chief's position? That was question number one. What is the status of our police chief's position in this community? No answer? You're gutless, sir.
City manager's working on it. City manager's working on it.
Now, the other thing is, what's the second question?
Have some order, please.
The second question is, what's the status of the position of fire chief? They're pointing to you, sir.
Steve Jelly is our fire chief.
What is he's acting as?
Acting fire chief.
What is?
Please, let's have some order.
What are you doing forward? What's what's going on?
It's not a question to answer, Tom.
You gotta be kidding me, Mike.
No, you were you were on the council, Doug. You know how this works.
You guys are gutless when you won't answer a question. What's the process you're gonna go through to hiring the city manager? You're telling me that a taxpayer doesn't have the right to ask you guys a question? Okay? It doesn't have, you guys don't have the ability to answer? Nice! Mr. Fisher, you complained to me when I was sitting at that table many times. No, I'm complaining to you. Listen to me. You say that to me. Listen to us. Listen to us. Guys, tonight, you got the power you you got tonight back taking that charter. If you would've been selected as a city manager, that would've given you the power. But now you got it. Captain, I have a good thing for you tonight. Okay? No, you're listening. Okay? Yes, yes, yes.
You're gonna go with Doc.
Okay? That's terrible. That's terrible from you guys. Do you want support? I think the gloves oughta come off. I think it's time to force the citizens committee around here.
Okay, Doug.
Okay? This is terrible, what you just did, Doug.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Okay, it's that's the order. Next. Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to make a suggestion, and in the future, when you submit bills that amend these city charters, now besides putting the redline version, the eminent version, you'll also list below what the new version could look like, their completion language. Cuz I have the eye, I read bill seventy-two in that redline version, and I don't see where it says city council will only act upon the recommendations of city managers. I I don't read that anymore. So it couldn't, better word than if it's new, you have to use that. I don't see you passing that.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else like to speak? Come on down, Rick.
Earlier, I mentioned that uh some of the decisions that I've taken over the last eight months, I thought were personal, indebted, and now I can't do that. Steve Fisher, I worked to do for your whole career. I've seen cops, backstabbing, so I can't believe you turned on your own police department, you know? I know what the personal issue is, you, you, and you. And I can understand what's going on there. You guys got personal indebted, you have certain people that you didn't agree with, that had to listen to, you didn't like their answer. Far as you go, you're a liar, you lie strictly to my face, telling me you weren't in any position that you did. Anybody ever talked to you? I'd like to publicly know that that time you walked up to your club, they talked to you.
Right, right. Let's not be so personal.
They could see whose hands stuck up and what moved his lips.
Right, wait, wait.
I'd like to uh go back to what Mr. Tullio was referencing, in comparison to the murder of these men. Again, how the attorney, city attorney, that is invisible most of the time, could clearly conceive that the council didn't influence the appointment of the city manager. It spells it out right there. Maybe you guys have some inside uh info from the attorney, and I'm sure before you got it, but we'll go from there, Doug. In reality, though.
Dan.
If you guys do act on C nine, and amend the city charter, you're doing the city a great favor, if you could possibly forfeit your office under C ten. And we will work for that, first time you do that.
Anyone else like to speak?
Wait, any other?
Yes, anybody?
I mean, not online.
Yeah, I'm doing that next. Uh anybody remotely uh raising their hand?
Yes, uh I have two individuals. The first one is registered as Samuel Frazina, and I will unmute that person now. It appears they are self-loathing.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, uh my name is Sam Frazina, President of New York State Professional Firefighters Association. Uh I have over thirty-five. Uh, I have over thirty-five years' experience as a, in the professional fire service, as firefighter, and, uh, most recently as a union president representing New York State and the International Association of Firefighters as a field service rep, which represents, uh, approximately three hundred and twenty-five thousand firefighters. Uh, I'm talking tonight because I've heard a very, very disturbing, uh, news about, uh, people thinking to, to, uh, get rid of, uh, the paid fire service and, uh, and, uh, expect it to be covered by volunteers, uh, who don't exist. Uh, I've been in this business for many years. I have worked with numerous mayors, numerous municipalities across New York State and beyond. Uh, my job, part of my job, is to work with municipalities to help improve the delivery and effectiveness of fire services and EMS services. I, along with, uh, many other experts across our country who I work with, from New York City to, uh, bigger locals on the West Coast, all over New York State. We've been doing this for many years, and to date, I have never, ever heard of or experienced any municipality who is willing to get rid of paid professional full-time firefighters and expect to, to have that service replaced with nonexistent volunteers. And from what I was told, there are no volunteers right now in the city of, of Albensburg. You do, however, have a very professional experience-
Uh, I'm sorry, sir, you have two minutes, your, your time is up, but thank you.
That was a quick two minutes.
I, I didn't do the timer, someone else did, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, can you, uh, go ahead?
We allow, we allow party over.
Uh, Kathy, please, let's have some order.
I'm checking now to see if there's any other individuals with, uh, the, uh- There are no other individuals at this time, ma'am.
Okay, so, at this time, we have a need for executive session.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Mayor, there was a hand in the audience here, Mr. Max?
We're, we're, I'm, we did our audience, I'm sorry. Um, so, let's have some order, order, order. Okay, so, at this time, we have a need for executive session. You know?
He actually stood up before he wanted to talk, and then he sat down when other people were, when you're doing the audio, so, I think it's, personally, I think it's fair to let him talk.
Yeah, that's hot.
I, uh, I did not see, I thought you were like-
I stood in the back for a minute, then you just rolled into the audio there, like, that now while you're speaking, and came back in.
Okay, go ahead, Kathy.
I just wanna speak on behalf of the vacancy, I'm the Police Supervisors Union President, I just wanted to speak on behalf of the chief's vacancy. Obviously, we've been speaking with Mr. Jelly over the last few months, asking many questions, wondering why the project hasn't been pushed forward, pressuring him a little bit in the last few weeks, uh, finally, there are words, some interviews done, and finally, uh, some things move forward. Um, you know, the rumor mill is what it is, I don't need to repeat them, however, uh, we, over the last week, have dealt with something that's very difficult, and we have had our leader stand up, represent our department, take care of all of us, and demonstrate what true leadership is, and much to your agreement, he lives in the city. So, the same for our West guy. So, I hope, uh, what that means is that you're gonna be moving forward with not only filling the vacancy, but filling it with a city resident, uh, who is the leader of the police department currently, who would do a phenomenal job, and I hope that, that the process, I know a lot of you guys aren't looking at me, so I'm assuming that's not. Um, but, uh, hopefully, you're gonna be answering his question, uh, with that decision soon, because, uh, that is, that is the correct decision, that is the decision that our department, uh, has leaned on over the last week. Um, so, I hope that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we have a need for executive session to discuss the medical, financial credit or employment history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation, and I will make a motion that we adjourn to executive session.
I'll second that.
I'm sorry, I can't second.
Okay. What would be action, how does it? Ready action coming on in seven seconds.
Yes.
Do you like to help, Rob?
Yes, please.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Power?
Yes.
Counselor Reese?
Yes.
Counselor Camberly?
Yes.
Mayor Scotty?
Yes.
Counselor Dillawoff?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Approved.
Um, are we going in this room? I thought I voted no, did I vote yes? I did. Absolutely. Oh, you're welcome.
Very good. What was it? What was it?
Well, we got a step up, Dave Price just stepped down, but I have it. I'm staying, I'm staying. Uh, you staying? No. I don't know. I'll leave it to the right. No. Yeah, I don't wanna touch it, I don't wanna do it.
You know, I think you started one meeting in one year. Well, um, yeah, so, how many meetings was that, or the fourth? Oh, I'm waiting. I'm waiting. I don't think I'm part of it.
You give you lessons, I'm lost?
Yeah.
Let's turn to culture. Now you do the heart.
Coaching counsel on how to eat practice.
Sorry, I should've.
Thank you. We're, we're ready, Steve. Oh, oh, yeah, sorry. Um, uh, let's see. Uh, Kathy, would you, uh, let the record show, let, let the record reflect that council has returned from executive session, and all members of council are still present. And Steve, you're gonna read a resolution, please?
Resolution, move it to the higher degrees, where the government of the city council elected a higher degrees on January sixth, twenty-twenty, where there are vacant positions in the city that must be filled, now therefore be resolved at the higher degrees.
I shall move.
All right.
Discussion?
I think that the example, uh, tonight, according to our own rules, but, uh, it's not even an executive session, I think. That's inappropriate, we can't vote on a resolution the same night that it's introduced.
I think you have to have a majority plus one, right?
Yeah, we can vote on it with five, five agree to us.
Need five votes.
Five affirmative votes, and you can vote on something that was brought from the floor.
I don't think so, but that's what you wanna do this time.
Kathy, what's your opinion?
In accordance with Administrator Act seventeen, E five point three, anything that is brought from the floor may be immediately actioned by counsel upon a vote of two-thirds of all members of counsel that evening, otherwise it goes to the next agenda. So, it would be a vote of five tonight, approved.
Okay. Any further discussion? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reese?
Um, I am completely caught off guard by this. Uh, I don't think it's a good way internally to do business. Uh, I think we still have some difficult financial times to go through. We are starting, I'm explaining my hope. We're to start with, we are starting, uh, the budget process here in August, and it'll be coming up. And I think that's a more appropriate time to do it, so I'm going to vote that.
Counselor Camberly?
Yes.
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Dillawoff?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher? Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Approved.
That is?
Okay. At this time, I will make a motion to adjourn. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Ad, adjourned. Thank you, sir.